I think we're all here. Great, okay, thank you so much again. Good evening, everybody, it's so nice to see everyone. Welcome. It's my pleasure to make a motion to return to public session if I could ask for a second, please. Thank you Rory. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Terrific. Would everybody please join us by rising for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic. For which it stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible. Liberty and justice for all. Terrific. Thank you so much. It's Thursday, January 28th. And tonight, we are really looking forward to an update on the work of our Equity and Racial Justice Team and our All In Group. It's terrific that we're able to have this update tonight. I wanted to just take a moment to remind the board and our community that it was just really one year ago to the week that we first had an opportunity to bring our minds to bear on the New York State Culturally Responsive Framework for Education. We were engaged just a year ago, even though it feels like so much has changed, in a two-part conversation related to social emotional learning at the time. And we had an opportunity even to look at an SEL Vision Statement that was in the making where we talked about the need for our students to experience school in a welcoming, affirming environment in which they can work on skills and dispositions that will equip them for a complex, ever-changing world. We talked about the reality that their varied cultures, identities, and perspectives should be celebrated and viewed as assets to a robust learning environment. And I think it's just terrific to look back a year ago and to know that we had just started and that tonight, a year later, we have this opportunity to hear from so many members of our administration and faculty and to know that members of the community are also engaged in this work. So thank you in advance for bringing this evening together. I can imagine that entails a lot of careful coordination. And we're really looking forward to hearing from everybody. I'll just pause briefly if there are any board announcements this evening. I don't know whether board members have announcements at this time. I wanted to just make two quick announcements. One is just to let our community know that on February 5th, yes, February 5th, a week from tomorrow, Kim will be emailing an announcement to the community to let everybody know that packets for Board of Education seats will be available in the District Office on February 8th, Monday, February 8th. So thank you very much, Kim, for letting us know that. And then I just also briefly wanted to thank our administrators and instructional leaders for making themselves available for a Q and A over at the high school, so to speak, for parents and community members last night who are thinking ahead to next year and to course selection. That also seemed like it took a lot of careful coordination and planning and we really appreciate it. So, thank you. And then with that, if other board members aren't waiting for announcements, we would love to hear from you, Andrew, if you have some announcements, please.
Sure, I do have a few. Thank you, Marjorie.
Thank you.
I'd like to start tonight by congratulating the students and the staff at the high school who this last weekend put on a production of The Laramie Project, which is, for anyone who doesn't know, The Laramie Project is a play and it is the story. It's a story of the tragic death, murder of Matthew Shepard. It's a powerful work, an important work. And we should feel very proud of our students and our staff for putting on that production, working hard through this pandemic to bring it together and present it for the community via, by a stream so that people could view it. And I want to thank everybody for being, for their involvement and congratulate them on that work. With that, I want to move a little bit to the world around us for a few minutes and then I'll come back to our schools again. After that, it has been an interesting week, I could say the least. Last week, the CDC published in the Journal of American Medical Association a study that I've been working on for some time, and I'm going to read here a quote that actually comes from The Atlantic Magazine that said, that quotes that study saying that "The preponderance of available evidence from the fall semester has reassured the agency, the CDC, that with adequate masking, distancing, and ventilation, the benefits of opening schools outweigh the risks of keeping kids at home for months." And of course, this is something that we've all been paying very close attention to and wondering about and thinking about, you know, which is the balance between the safety of all and the importance, which we all recognize, of bringing students back into school. So, there's been a lot of media attention on this topic in the last week, including our own governor's comments, as recently as yesterday, before, I think, in the media, referencing perhaps a full return to in-person learning in the, in the, in the future. He didn't, he wasn't specific, but he did reference it and suggested that it would be up to local districts at some point to make those decisions. At the, while, while it's happening, he also yesterday lifted the yellow and orange zones in Westchester County. And of course, while that's all happening, we're aware that the case numbers around us continue to be very, very high in Westchester County. So I'm sure for many, there's a lot of wondering about the timing of these announcements and wondering where we are to go next. I think, and, and then let me bring us back to our own schools. We know particularly in our high school of late, the numbers have been a little bit higher, even than, the numbers of positive cases have been a little bit higher than even in some of our neighboring district high schools. I think it's important to point out for community's sake, everyone's sake, that the vast majority of those cases that we learn about are not people who are at school at the moment. You can see that reflected in the daily evening emails that I send out whenever I reference that there is no contact tracing necessary. That tells you that the people in most cases have not been at school for some time. We do however, have to register those cases with the state and we list them as being onsite if the people are connected to our hybrid model, even if they're not currently attending. So I just wanted to clarify that for the community. So there do continue to be a lot of, in some ways seemingly conflicting messages as the numbers around us still are very high. And yet we hear talk about reopenings of schools and other things. So, I want to reassure the community that we will certainly be watching very closely to see where this goes next. There has not, to date, been any change specifically in the guidance under which we operate schools. So we're still under the six-foot distancing guidelines. And I think many would, would want to argue that it's those kinds of guidelines, the mask-wearing, of course, that have allowed the data that the CDC reports on to be positive. So, we shall see where this goes. And again, I do want to reiterate that we know, because there have been, also been reports in the last week emphasizing the, the very great importance for students to be in their schools and be connected. So, we continue to watch that balance. While all that's happening, our administrators do continue to look at the space available in schools, particularly in our secondary schools where we do have some space and, and based on what's available, we do continue to invite students based on need to come back and be with us four days a week. So those invitations continue to go out. Another big announcement that came very recently was around winter sports. So I want to just reference that quickly. This came just this last Friday. We had been waiting for quite some time for the governor to comment specifically in the area of what are called the high-risk winter sports. For us, those include basketball and ice hockey and wrestling. And so, late last Friday, Governor made an announcement that he would give a kind of green light to those sports to move forward, but he would put it in the hands of the county Departments of Health to give final guidance to schools as to whether they should move forward. So then we waited till this week. And, and when the governor mentioned this, he also said with a potential star date of February 2nd, which of course is just the beginning of next week, so this all happens very quickly. This week, our own county executive has indicated that he's inclined to support the forward movement of these sports. But still, we have not heard final guidance. Section 1 has also indicated support for these sports. But again, we're still waiting for final guidance on how these sports are to operate. And again, now it's Thursday and February 2nd comes off the beginning of next week. So, I want to reassure the community, you'll see on the agenda tonight, we're appointing coaches in a number of these sports. Our Athletic Director is working very hard to try to put together plans so that if we are going to be moving forward, we do it in ways that are as safe and as sensible as possible. And I think, I guess I want to recognize that for some, some of these movements may seem contradictory, you know, to be moving forward with indoor activities of this nature again when cases are high or perhaps, why move forward with these activities if we're not moving forward full steam with every student in school? And I think we have to acknowledge that there is some level of contradiction as we continue to, as everybody tries to work out what makes the most sense in this continually challenging environment. So, you know, I think there's hope on the horizon for things improving with the vaccines coming. We're going to keep moving as thoughtfully forward as we can to balance safety along with the really important need for students to be involved in activities, not just sports, but all kinds of activities that they are very passionate about and that mean a great deal to them and that they care deeply about. So we will be, again, watching all these things, sharing information with the community as it comes to us and keeping you up to date with announcements. And I think, Marjorie, that's, that's all my announcements for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks very much, Andrew, for the comprehensive overview. I'll just pause briefly in case anybody has a comment or a question. Yes, please, Bill.
You don't think you'd get away with it without me saying something, right? For this high-risk sports, was there guidance on, I mean, I don't even know how you do basketball and not, and wrestling? I don't, I, I, it's probably at some point just silly to, during practices or something, do all types of protections and protocols and masks and all this and then play the game with people from another district and do whatever you want. But is, is the Athletic Director working on protocols akin to those for the fall sports? Where there was more distancing, maybe rules around the fan attendance and that sort of thing?
Yes, the, the section has actually continued to provide, on the last piece at least, the fan attendance, I think, is one of the clearest things. And I think people recognize the importance of minimizing that. So there's definitely guidance on limiting fan attendance. And then quite honestly, it does get very challenging and you named wrestling. Wrestling, I think, is the one that gives everybody the most pause. And so, you know, we, we are looking very closely at that, most closely at that one. And, and talking with other districts about how they plan to move forward. I think, I think to some degree, though, we also have to put some degree of faith that there is data based on sports that have taken place. You know, we were, we were very concerned about fall sports, appropriately so. We went through fall sports. We did reasonably well with fall sports. And so I think it is this balance of, of knowing that these activities are really important for students, for their mental health and wellbeing. And so it's, you know, can we do it safely? You know, so, so certainly basketball and wrestling, wrestling most of all present challenges to how we might do that. But if we can, even if we can find ways to bring students in and have them be together, even if the activity then doesn't happen in all of its traditional ways, you know, we would want to try to find ways to do that because we know that it's important for them. So, that's, we haven't, we haven't had a lot of time to think through all these things, but we are thinking as fast as we can right now.
Thank you. If there aren't any other comments or questions, then please hold on to the floor and we are eager to hear from our presenters and enter into some discussion, so.
Super.
Thank you.
So I'm going to do a little bit of introducing and then I think, I think Kim is going to be welcoming some of our guests here into the screen. We're going to have two groups tonight. Tonight, we're going to hear from two groups that are both doing very, very important work in our district and work that is very much intertwined, but also distinct in some ways. And this is all work related to equity and racial justice and inclusion in our school district. As we work to strengthen the experience for students in our district, as we aspire to provide every single student the education they deserve and need in ways that are not only equitable for all students, but that nurture and bring joy to every student each day. Tonight will be an update on the work so far. It's not intended to be a comprehensive review of where we are and all that we've learned and done. But more simply, tonight, we wanted to help the Board of Education have a feel for the nature of the work that we're engaged in. And we expect that you'll hear from one, if not perhaps both of these groups, again, later in the year, as the work continues to progress. When, I do want to be very candid and say that when we began this work, we didn't necessarily anticipate having two distinct groups working in parallel. But I have grown to be very glad that we do. Because the more I learn about the work and the more I learn about the scope of work necessary and the complexity of the work and maybe most importantly, the fact that this work must happen both in ways that are very personal as well as in ways that are systemic and organizational. Those things all make it clear to me that we are not only fortunate to have two groups, but we should feel proud that we have two groups doing this important work. We can also anticipate that in future years, we expect to have more than two groups as the work grows and spreads throughout our schools. As you listen tonight, I think you'll hear some of the differences in the work and some of the ways in which the work of each group also complements the other. I should also note that the facilitators of both groups meet together on a monthly basis so that we can stay in touch with and we can coordinate with each other. We're going to start tonight with our Equity and Racial Justice Committee. And it's always a little bit tricky to decide when you have two groups who will go first. But in this case, because we have a student with us, we are having the ERJ Committee go first so that our student Caitlin can still get back to work or get to bed at a reasonable hour. So now I am going very happily to introduce the ERJ Committee, which is a group of about sixty to seventy parents, students, teachers, administrators, and alumni who have been meeting monthly since the fall. Our meetings are facilitated by both Natalie McCabe's Werger and Luis Alejandro Tapia, who were both with us this evening from NYU's Center for Strategic Solutions at the Metropolitan Center for Research on Equity and the Transformation of Schools. Natalie and Luis have facilitated our journey this past fall, which has taken us through personal reflection and learning and study that you will hear more about in a moment. We're also going to be joined tonight by two members of the committee, Shivani Patel, who is a parent in our district, as well as Caitlin Varial, who I just mentioned, who is a junior right here at John Jay High School. So with that, I am going to share my screen, which will have some slides on it. And I will gladly turn over to Natalie and to Luis so that they can talk us through this work. Thank you, Natalie.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. It's great to be here. And Andrew, I know you're kind of controlling the slides, but Luis and I are alternating. So it should make it easy when, when I pause for a breath, it means that we're moving to the next one.
All right, thank you.
But it's great to be here, y'all, and great to see the board again. I've had the opportunity to engage with y'all. I don't even remember how long ago it was because time has taken on new meaning. But it's great to be back in discussing this vitally important work. A little bit of context for the community. My name is Natalie McCabe's Werger. I am the Director of the Center for Strategic Solutions down at the NYU Metro Center. We are a national Equity and Racial Justice Center that has the privilege of doing this work around the country with schools and districts and organizations that are really hoping to take their systems change out of the theoretical and discussional realm into actionable infrastructure work. And, and what I describe as infrastructure is really the opportunity for us to be architects of a system that doesn't currently exist, a system that is founded on principles of equity and racial justice that centers Black and Latinx children, that is responsive to the current sociopolitical climate that is making this work ever more challenging than it's been in the past, particularly under the conditions of a pandemic. And so, you know, I, I welcome and applaud the district's commitment. And I say to the community that this is our work, right? This work is going to take all stakeholders at the table. We'll talk a little bit about the foundation that we have laid, we'll talk about where we're going. But this idea of crafting, curating a space for stakeholders to come together is really intentional. And, and we've researched this work and we've seen, you know, practices that sustain over time. The hope, frankly, is that what we are building now will be an infrastructure that will outlast all of the current board, that will outlast all of the current district leadership, that really change the way we do things here in Cottona-Louisboro. And so that is the hope, that's how we're centering this work. And it's my sincere pleasure to be here today with my colleague Luis Alejandro, who I'll introduce in just a second. But just so you all know in terms of the perspective that I bring, I identify as a white Puerto Rican cis-hetero woman. My pronouns are she, her, hers. We are talking here today about intersectional equity and, and supportive of racial justice in a number of ways. And so you'll hear in the language that Lou and I use, one that is intersectional with some intentionality. And so we'll talk a little bit more about what that means. I've been an educator for twenty years and I'm also an attorney. So I do think that naming, from a civil rights perspective, the work that we're describing, the ERJC is doing, is taking us far beyond what you are legally required to do. This is not about compliance. This is not about just thinking of how to foster an anti-bias, anti-discriminatory environment. When we talk about racial justice, we're talking about getting to a much greater level of depth. And so hopefully tonight, we'll be able to give you a sense of what that means and what it looks like. But at this point, I'll turn it over to you, Lou, to start to center how the, the committee has really been working together as a community.
Yes, thank you, Abby. Thanks for Andrew, thanks to board, and thanks Caitlin for being here. And so my name is Luis Alejandro Tapia. I identify as a Black bilingual Caribbean gap-toothed cisgender man. I also identify as Aries Scorpio Gemini, if you're into horoscopes. And so, an essential question that we ask ourselves in all of the framing that we do around this work, this is a slide that the committee knows we're going to have every single time that we meet together, is the basis of the work that we do. And so we're constantly asking ourselves, how can I disrupt and dismantle the existence of inequity within my sphere of influence? Right? And so we understand that systemic change is deeply personal. Systemic change is deeply personal, right? But this simple, paradoxical idea is why a lot of system change efforts flunk, right? It creates this thing that makes us believe that the change is out there, some magic that we're kind of searching for. And it separates us from the work that we have to do here, right? In here, right now, with ourselves, in our families, in our communities, in the relations that we have with each other as educators, as students, as parents, et cetera, right? And so this basis, which we adapted from Gorski, some of the material that we use in our sessions also allows folks to really be intentional about the way that they engage in their spheres of influence, right? And so this names the type of power that we do have to create impactful transformation, even if it feels like it's small.
And so we thought we would walk you through a little bit of the foundation. So, here we are doing this work in New York State. And in 2019, the New York State Department of Education adopted a framework for culturally responsive and sustaining ed. Our office and Lou and I were co-authors of this framework. It's a hefty document, if you're looking for some light reading this weekend, it's seventy-four pages. We designed it by stakeholders. So you can flip to the section that asks what students need to do, teachers, leaders, community members, to really create and foster those welcoming and affirming spaces, but also spaces that are ready to confront issues of race and gender and sexuality and inequity and injustice. In furtherance of giving students like Caitlin and all the students that we serve here in Cottona-Louisboro the opportunity to be agents of change, to see themselves as, as critically aware of a changing world and apply that criticality. And so Lou and I thought we'd show you a couple of the definitions that are in that document to give you a sense of what do we mean when we say equity and racial justice? And so, and we've highlighted, of course, the particularly sage language in this definition. But equity is the state quality or ideal of being just, impartial, and fair. The concept of equity is synonymous with fairness and justice. And here's where it gets particularly sage. To be achieved and sustained, equity needs to be thought of as a structural and systemic concept and not as idealistic. And so to lose point, this work cannot exist in a theoretical realm, which means that when the ERJC gathers, much of what happens is a space to build capacity, but it's also a space to hold testimony, to hear from students, to hear from alumni, to hear from family members, a couple of whom you'll hear from this evening, who can share experiences that have provided them a sense of what's missing in our curriculum, what opportunities are missed in terms of relationship building, and then offer their ideas for how Cottona-Louisboro can be more responsive, can be more relevant, can be more equitable. Part of what the ERJC will do over time, and we'll take a look at their mission statement that they crafted as a group, as a community, is to really look in a number of areas that are starting to emerge so that they can offer the Board of Education before the end of June a set of recommendations. And, and there's a couple of areas that are really emerging that are taking that system-wide view and we'll share what some of those are. But it's really to have a sense of ultimately, how will our students know that we have put in all of this time and energy and investment and effort into this work? That's the measure, right? We won't be able to declare ourselves that we're more equitable. We'll have to hear that from young people. And so part of what this definition tells us to do and how the ERJC has been working through this process has been to take a look at all aspects of our district and really start to ask critical questions about what it means to live here, what it means to learn here, and what it might, you know, what kind of a place we might imagine where everyone could really be their full and whole selves? What would it take to get there?
Another one of the definitions that we base our work on is this definition on racial justice. And so racial justice is the systemic fair treatment of people of all races that result in equitable opportunities and outcomes for everyone. All people are able to achieve their full potential in life, regardless of race, ethnicity, or the community in which they live. Racial equity or racial, I'm sorry, racial justice or racial equity goes beyond anti-racism. So it's not just about what we are against, but also what we are for. A culturally responsive, sustaining education framework should move us from a reactive posture to a more powerful, proactive, and even preventative approach, right? And so key words in that definition of racial justice is equitable, which is different than equal, right? Something that's also important to name in the work that we're doing is the aim is for it to be forward-moving, right? It is for us to have a powerful, intentional, proactive, and preventative approach. So we're less focusing on what it is that we don't want and really giving our attention to what it is that we do want.
So this, you know, really just offers a visual representation of how we're taking a look at, at our community. We're asking questions about the responsibility, the accountability of each of the stakeholders represented here. So our partnership began and continues with some work with the board, with a district administrator, so all the leaders across the district engaging in the same type of critical reflection and critical dialogue that we are asking other stakeholders to engage in. And so part of what that means is taking a look at the decisions I make as a gatekeeper and asking questions about how, you know, who I am is impacting the way I make decisions. How are the biases that I have influencing how I think about and privilege some experiences over others? And so the idea being that over time, with the work of the ERJC and their recommendations, we will have a plan for how to engage all the folks on this slide in really answering, you know, the essential question that we put up at the beginning, right? How can I disrupt and dismantle inequity? What is my role in promoting racial justice? What can I do on a daily basis? How can I think differently, work differently, operate differently, whatever my role is? And, and the intentionality with this structure is, you know, we've seen a lot of districts that will come in at the level of mandating professional development for all teachers and staff right off the bat. If we do that and we haven't put in the infrastructure in place, then what happens is when the pushback comes and administrators and and administrators and the board don't fully understand the importance of the work, haven't done some of the critical reflection themselves, we won't actually be able to get to a place of transforming the system. It becomes a great development for the people who access it, but it doesn't make that meaningful change across the system. What's particularly unique about Katona Lewisboro that you'll be able to hear about tonight is that you have this huge invested group of teachers and alumni who've been working together for months. It's a voluntary space. These are folks that want to be there on All In that is really going to complement and strengthen this infrastructure in ways that we don't see in other school districts, because these things are happening simultaneously. So when we do start to implement some of the recommendations and get to a wider swath of the community that might not have signed up for ERJC or might not have signed up for All In, we will have that strong architecture to support welcoming them into this work, right? And that's really the hope, because we know that our community is entering in wildly different ways. And anytime we're talking about race, when you're talking about white folks and you're talking about BIPOC folks, Black Indigenous folks of color, you're talking about coming in in wildly different ways to talk about race and racism and identity. But we have to create a space where we can all dialogue, where we can all reflect. And we can do this centering young people. So we believe that this type of a model, in the long term, will serve our children with the, the strength that we really hope for.
And so as we're doing this work, we also are, are doing it inside the context of intersectionality, a term I think coined by Kimberlé Crenshaw some time ago, right? And so what that means is that, is that we are promoting equity in an intersectional way, right? And so we are conscious of the impact of race, of gender, of sexuality, of language, of ethnicity, of ability, of disability, of national origin, of socioeconomic status, et cetera. And so although we are aiming to be explicit about race, we're not being exclusive about race. We understand that all parts of these identities take part and shape your experience and also shape your oppressions as you experience the life that you're in, right? And so although we do hold the basis of racial justice, right, and racial equity, we're also doing this work from an intersectional approach.
So that's the structure. Now we wanted to make sure that you heard directly from the ERJC. So we'll do that in two ways. We came with the mission statement that the group drafted as a community. And so we'll read that out loud, and it's so beautiful, it's two slides long. And then we'll hear from Caitlin and Shivani a little bit about their experience in the space and, and what their thinking is at this point. We're about halfway through our work as an ERJC, so we just had our day five. And so we're about halfway the midpoint right now. So the committee came up with this mission statement. "The mission of the Katona Lewisboro School District Equity and Racial Justice Committee is to unveil inequity experienced in all parts of our school system, begin a chain reaction of dismantling inequity through intergenerational communication and solidarity, and develop an equity lens for the future of our district. We aim to take actionable measures to implement a heightened level of inclusion and awareness through recruiting more diverse hires, educating members of our community, parents, educators, students, and promoting anti-racism among the KLSD community. The ERJC is committed to ensuring that diversity and equity are embodied in the fabric of KLSD. We are leaders and learners who reflect upon and adapt to the dynamic opportunities for impact that we can each make in the community. We are committed to raising and graduating open-minded, critical thinkers and social change agents and future advocates, and encouraging students to participate in activism."
Just gotta give some time to breathe into that, as we move into the second part, the mission. And so I'll begin. "The ERJC seeks to ensure that every member of our community receives an equitable education and feels empowered, included, affirmed, welcomed, safe, successful, and accomplished, and is challenged to widen their own perspectives with a focus on empowering the voices of school community members who may typically feel unseen, unheard, and underappreciated, while bringing people in and not further factionalizing the community. Our imperative is to use our voices, all of our voices, to ensure that all children experience joy and learning, foster equity in the services provided by our schools, and embrace multiculturalism. We are committed to providing actionable recommendations to the Board of Education and community in a number of areas, including but not limited to, one, staff hiring and onboarding, two, professional development, ensuring curriculum is effective, reflective of our values and the lens of equity, social justice, anti-racism, and ways to create, maintain, and perpetuate community conversations around race, equity, social justice in all forms, shifting our focus from intention to impact, impact on students, parents, families, relationships, and future community members."
So with that mission statement in mind, we are really privileged to have two members of the ERJC joining us tonight to talk a little bit about the experience there. And so we'll just go in the order that y'all are listed on this slide, if that works for you. We like predictability. So Shivani, do you want to start us off and talk to us a little bit about what it's been like for you?
Thank you so much. First, I want to say thank you. I'm very privileged and honored to be part of this meeting. Thank you Superintendent Sells, Nick, Natalie, Lou, and all of my colleagues on the ERG for allowing me to speak. In September, KLSD sent out this email inviting people to be part of the board, to part of the ERJ. And in that material that was sent out, there were some listed goals as part of the ERJ. And when I went, when I was asked to speak here today, I went back to those goals to look at what those were, to try to reflect on what work we're doing. So I just wanted to list three of the goals that I pulled from that email. Build staff capacity to understand and share language around promoting equity in school. Review and analyze complexified data points to understand the equity narrative at the school and support professional learning to foster culturally responsive, sustaining practices in the school and beyond. Thus far, in the five sessions that we've had, we have actually been able to touch on each of these goals. I can't say we have solved the world's problems. We certainly haven't even scratched the surface. However, we're having discussions around all of these things that Natalie mentioned, all of the things in the mission statement. And, you know, the conversations are so like deep and robust that we're really kind of, kind of scratching the surface, realizing the can of worms that's underneath each of these words. And we're really learning about them a little bit more, so we can have meaningful conversations. So all of the participants in the committee, I've noticed, are generally engaged in the goals that were, I just talked about, and in the mission statement ideals, and grapple with providing authentic and meaningful experiences for their children or, or from the parent's perspective, and strive to figure out how to truly support educators in providing balanced experiences for those who interact with KLSD. We want to use tried and true teaching methodologies and curriculum, but we, which have been historically successful, but we recognize that our curriculum must include material which will speak to more reflective experiences of those who are part of the school community. So these things really are part of our discussions. And as Natalie moves us forward through the various things that she's teaching us, we kind of, you know, have the dialectical dialogue that she's teaching us, but then we're touching on all these things at the same time. So it's a very robust discussion. And, you know, we have very real conversations about the words used in the classroom, colloquial slang used in everyday speak, and the experiences and the contents contained in the teaching material. We question these materials and discuss how to critically think about them. So, and you know, how it may be perceived by those who are on the fringes of equity or racial justice. So with that, you can see that we're really touching on all the things that I, you know, Natalie talked about. And really that idea of how we as individuals can, you know, kind of affect our sphere of influence at the same time. So the committee has provided a safe, safe, safe space for these kind of conversations. And more importantly, to show vulnerability. And just the idea of, I don't know, and how do we solve this? And kind of going through that work together, which is really important as well, to not know the answers and to struggle with the discomfort of not knowing as well. So from the engaging in the committee, just to end my little part here, I have learned the power of the student voice and how committed the students are and how deeply our kids are struggling with these issues. And really, the amount of work that has to be done, we really have really just scratched the surface on it. And, you know, frankly, I've learned what I don't know and, you know, just learned how to be a learner again as well. So it's been a very positive experience. So I find that the committee is fulfilling these purported goals that I identified earlier and, you know, really working towards that mission statement. And, you know, hopefully the work will expand as we continue to go delve deeper into it. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Shivani. And what a great segue to hear from one of those amazing students, of which there are many on the ERJC. Caitlin, take us away.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Zebryali. I'm a, as everyone said, I'm a junior at the high school. And everyone has already really well-described ERJ and what we do. So my little part is that we really focus on in-depth education on a variety of complex issues that before this, I had not really spoken with my community, especially those pertaining race and ethnicity. And we've also looked at real events and data from our district and used problem-solving skills to produce viable and equitable solutions. And going forward, I'm really hopeful for our discussions and how we're going to act on how to facilitate the positive holistic and equitable change. And lastly, one thing from the student perspective is that I have already seen change in our curriculum and our community as fellow members of both students and teachers have integrated social justice into our Socratic seminars and other discussions. So the entire class is truly engaged in these crucial conversations. And I really feel the more people talk about it and the more educated we can move forward as a community for a greater equity for all.
Thank you so much, Caitlin. I, Lou and I don't like to speak for the group, but I know that I speak for the group in saying that I can't wait to live in the world that you and the other students are leading. So thank you for bringing your brilliance to us every time we come together, but also for tonight. You're appreciated in ways that you don't fully know. So to wrap, we just, I think we have one more slide that was just the, the definition of CRSE, culturally responsive sustaining education, again, from that framework that you can luxuriate with later on in your time. But this is the, this is what we're hoping for, right? And, and it gives great context to the hard work that All In has been engaged in. When we talk about CRE, this isn't an easy list of five things. This is a complex list of five things that are not intuitive. They're not necessarily in the handbook when you become an educator. And they're certainly not supported by the system that frankly wasn't set up to foster each of these things for all of our children. So affirming racial, linguistic, and cultural identities, preparing students for rigor and independent learning, developing students' abilities to connect across lines of difference, elevating historically marginalized voices, and probably most importantly, empowering students as agents of social change. And so this is the why, right? This is why we're here, this is why we do the work. And we're very excited in the coming months to continue to share with you a glimpse into what the stakeholder committee views as the pathway to get to these practices across the district. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much, please. I know we're still just in the middle of our discussion and presentation, but just to briefly pause and say thank you. That was an incredibly insightful overview. We really appreciate not only hearing from Natalie and Louise, but also that we had a parent and a student representative. And just honestly, hearing about your positive experiences as committee members is terrific. And just envisioning that this conversation is happening across stakeholder groups, if you will, bringing students and parents and faculty and facilitators together to really take a deeper dive into this culturally sustaining framework and to help develop a plan of action. It's really inspiring and encouraging. So I know, again, we're just midstream, but thank you. That was a terrific overview and we really appreciate your voices. And now we're delighted to hear from our representatives from All In. I'm sorry, Andrew, please go ahead.
Let me, let me give a little bit of segue and then maybe we'll take questions at the end. In a way, Caitlin there just helped a little bit with some of our segue. I think in terms of some contrast between the two groups, you heard Natalie speak to a system-wide view that the ERJC is taking. And then, and I would say that so far, the learning, and there's been a lot of it, has been within that large group of 60 to 70 people on the ERJC. When Caitlin speaks to some changes that she's seeing in classrooms already, I would see that's more reflective of some of the very amazing work that's going on with the All In group. So let me introduce two of our district staff developers, Candy Wilmot and Catherine Grabash, who in addition to all of the other work they have been doing to support our teachers and administrators throughout the district, and even through a global pandemic, have been facilitating the All In group since last March. And as you'll hear in a moment, this is a group of enormously dedicated teachers, alumni, and some administrators who have worked tirelessly since the spring to challenge themselves and one another to learn together in order to make change in classrooms and for students throughout the district. And I can't say how impressed and proud I am of their level of commitment to work that can be both personally and professionally daunting at times. And that is of course so vitally important to our students. And with that, I will gladly turn over to Candy and Natalie, and I will also find the slides for their presentation.
Thank you.
One moment.
Thank you, Andrew.
Sure.
Good evening, everyone. Again, I am Candy Wilmot, and I am one of the staff developers housed in the high school, but district-wide. Catherine and I just want to talk to you a little bit about the work that we've been doing. Thank you Natalie for your presentation. So that we're not, some of the work overlaps, as Andrew just indicated, but we wanted to kind of talk about the essence of who we are and how we got started. All In started as a conversation after George Floyd was killed. And we didn't know what would come of that conversation, but we were delighted to figure out that several other people wanted to have the conversation as well. And so what started as one conversation became 40-plus conversations. And that is, we have been meeting every Thursday at seven, well, the time has changed, but we've met once a week since then. And what has become of this group is it's become a brave space for teachers, clinicians, TAs, alumni, to get together and discuss what our own work is and with, with respect to what needs to happen for us to move forward with curricula and how it is that we might create spaces for children to learn about themselves in the context of the world at large. We've been very delighted with the work that we've done. And a lot of our, our teachers are here tonight. And I wanted to say that I'm always humbled to be in their company because their dedication and diligence is just humbling and absolutely fabulous. Catherine, would you like to talk about sort of the work that we do within the schools?
Sure. So I'm Catherine Grabash. Again, I am the staff developer mainly in the middle school, but also district-wide. Andrew, you can go to the next slide. I'm just gonna briefly talk about some of the, the buy-in that we have in our district. What I, what I want to add to what Candy said is that really, after we started our conversations, after George Floyd's murder, our, our continued conversations were really spurred by some stories that we heard from our alumni. And our work continues to be pushed by their voices. We did have meetings with many of them over the summer. That has changed as of school starting. So our, our current weekly meetings are teachers and admin, clinicians and TAs, because our, our focus really is on action. And our focus is on changing our curriculum. Our focus is on using an equity lens when we are teaching. Our focus is on looking at our pedagogy and things that we move into our classrooms through that equity lens, so that we can make sure that all of our students' voices are heard and what perspectives and voices we might be missing. So that's really, you know, what continues and kind of pushes our conversations and our discussions each week. So, you know, just that the fact that we are, you know, an action group and So you know, just that the fact that we are, you know, an action group and we have made so many changes throughout the district already. One of them Caitlin mentioned. So I think just knowing that it is a district-wide um group. We have elementary representatives, we have middle school representatives, high school, um and then alumni periodically. Um, and we have some administrators that join us from various levels. And so we had started with, you know, breaking off into smaller groups so that we could make sure we were really working at the levels that we were kind of involved with. That has kind of evolved and changed and now we work more together. But we always are focused on just taking our curriculum to the next level through this lens of equity.
Some of the things that, oh, I think we need the next slide. This is our mission statement. And while it's a little jumbled and there's some overlap between ours and ERJ. But we have been, uh, it's very difficult for me to read this because of the way that it is, but I'm not gonna, maybe we could go to the next slide. I think a lot of it is sort of, we've mentioned already. So what do we do? Well, largely we are teachers and teachers write curriculum. So we spend a lot of time thinking about what it is that we want to do so that we can reflect in our classrooms, what is happening in the world. Uh, some of that has been uh difficult, uh, some of it has been uncomfortable. But what we've looked at is how we swap out books. We begin to integrate more of uh more diverse readings that reflect just what America looks like. We have created a collection of resources that is available district-wide on Google Docs. That helps us do our own work. That is the work that we need to do to deal with our own implicit bias. And then how in dealing with that, how then do we begin to change what our classroom looks like? That Google Docs is quite extensive and there's a starting point for anyone that wants to jump in. So from beginner to intermediate to, we don't have any experts, so we don't have any um expert resources at this time. We frame our discussions, we try to create uh discussions that are not just about talking out our feelings, but that lead us to some action. Where we can measure the work that we're doing in terms of how we're changing things. And I mentioned before that we swap out text, but we also think about how we're using text, why language is important. How we refer to one another, how we work with each other in the classroom, whose voices aren't being heard. And why we need to, you know, thinking about why we need to build on having more of those silenced voices heard in the classroom. We can go to the next slide. Catherine?
So this is just kind of an overview of what we've been talking about, but we do that ongoing curriculum work where, you know, teachers will bring different ideas that they have. Or there might be something that happens uh in our country that teachers want to discuss and are not sure how to bring it to their classrooms. Um, we have done some gap analysis by looking at different curriculum and seeing, you know, what's missing, who's missing. Um, and from elementary through high school, teachers have been looking at where they can fill in these gaps uh in their curriculum, regardless of subject area. From STEM through, you know, fifth grade curriculum, it's it's really all over. Um, we've also been working towards um trying to help strengthen the ENL program that our district currently has. So that we really can make sure that those voices that are in our district. Um, we're really looking at the whole ELL student and making sure that we are supporting them the best that we can. So we've been having some conversations around different things that we're, we're trying to kind of figure out how to best support our ELL students through the program that we have.
And while this is not a comprehensive sense of what All In does. We have uh provided the Board of Ed through Andrew a video that does that. That we hope that we'll be able to have to come back and have a more extensive conversation with you. But here are the ways that you can help us. You can support and acknowledge the work being done. Redisess and obviously do your own work. And if you need help with that, you know, some people that can help you out. And encourage others around you and in your community to do their own REI work as well. Thank you.
Thank you for the overview. And even just if I can um pick up where you left off, you know, for the invitation to partnership. Uh, just I found the last slide to be um a very powerful slide, actually, just the the reminder that we're in partnership. And um, we want to support you in this work and the the bullets with, you know, specific. Actionable things that we can be doing to support you in our own daily lives and um in our roles and in our capacity as a board. So we really appreciate you taking the time to provide the overview. Thank you for your dedication and for meeting on a weekly basis for such a long period of time. I'm not sure that any of us realize just how um frequently and in such a dedicated manner you had been meeting all this time. So we really thank you for the ongoing commitment. And the inclusivity and for being a resource and a space for multiple stakeholders. Uh, I'm going to pause here. I'm I'm sure board colleagues have questions and comments. I I think at this point, perhaps if it's okay, we'll open it up to all of our guests. Maybe there are even some synthetic comments or questions. Observations. Would somebody like to begin? Please, Rory.
Thanks, Marjorie. Oh, my God. Oh, my goodness. This is awesome. I'm really so excited um that both these initiatives are underway and that we have such thoughtful leadership uh across both groups. And it's just, it's just great um that we're beginning to see headway. It's uh really wonderful to hear Caitlin uh report on changes already to the curriculum. And I think that really is a testament to um All In being sort of on the ground and and sort of working uh on immediate impact. Whilst ERJ is, you know, engaging the community at large and making this a very um real uh community topic. So I'm so excited. I really feel like this is long overdue and uh it's really great to hear from both groups. So thank you. I guess my question sort of being a data analyst by background is, you know, are there ways? Or maybe this is not the type of effort we ought to be trying to measure, but are there ways that? We can begin to measure or even benchmark where we are today or where we were twelve months ago? And how we are advancing as we proceed over the next twelve months, year, five years, ten years? So we can look back and say, look at all of the progress that we made. And obviously I know that we'll report out pretty regularly on the progress we're making, but are there any tangible? Things that mistakes that we can put in the ground to say, hey, here's where we are. It's not so great. Here's where we're striving to go. And then actually we're making progress towards that goal. Open to whomever wants to take a crack at it. Thanks.
I'm happy to pop in for a moment. Um, you know, the greatest measure will be having Caitlin and her peers uh come back continuously, right? And and report back on the shifts that they feel and experience palpably. Um, the fact that you already have, uh, as ERJC calls it, this intergenerational space with alumni who've graduated in different years. Who in many ways have been reflecting the same inequitable experiences years ago that we're still hearing echoed from students today, right? Like, that's going to ultimately be your measure. But you also want, you know, quantitative data to support you as well. So one thing that ERJC is continuing to do, taking a deep dive into data. So we started to take a look at disaggregated data for your graduation rates, your AP and college course enrollment data. We have compared staff and student demographics and we are going to do that over a number of years. That's going to be a great measure to see if you do put in place some changes to your hiring, retention and leadership development practices. Are you having an impact in terms of representation? What does that mean for children, right, over time? We'll take a look at discipline and achievement data. We started to take a little bit of a look at some of the growth that's happened by different subgroups and where there are disparities by race. Students with disabilities, socioeconomic, right, all the layers that we want to take a look at. So we'll continue to do that, but you have to pair that quantitative data with the experiential, right? The anecdotal qualitative lived experiences. What does it mean to be here? We'll also do dives into curriculum. So I think the biggest measure for me is, once we start to impact folks who didn't volunteer for All In. Right? The question becomes, what does the work look like to support them? Because you ultimately want to make sure that our district becomes a place where this commitment to equity and racial justice is non-negotiable. Right? You may not get everybody to sign up to meet once a week at the level of depth that All In has been operating and continues to operate. But we have to start to make some non-negotiable values of what it means to serve children here. And so those will be effective measures as well. How does this gradually start to to reach folks who may not necessarily have found their way in yet? But will ultimately be asked because this is how we do things here, right? We change that. It's a very informal measure, but probably the most important one. Um, we'll change the way we operate and that will take some time, but you'll set some some goals and start to measure that way.
That's really helpful, Natalie. Thank you. Would would you guys consider? I don't know, setting up like an annual survey of students as they leave the high school to ask them about their uh experience as it as it related to. ERJ and racial inequity and other types of intolerance. Would you consider doing that and seeing if our sort of scores improve over time as we begin to implement all of these great ideas?
No, we already have our senior survey, Rory, and then we have our survey um after students have graduated about a year after. So that might be a place where we could incorporate. Maybe Natalie can help to advise us on some of the questions we could ask to really get at that.
That's what I was thinking, Mary. Thank you.
Sure.
And we also have the senior interviews, which might give more um context to the stories. Because sometimes the question and answer doesn't tell the whole story. Um, so maybe when we think about our senior interviews this year, we can try to get some questions crafted that will give that kind of background and information.
Thank you. Thanks, Ellen.
Yes, Bill, please.
Wonderful presentation and uh. I guess unfortunately timely. Um, I think food for a future thought, not now, but down the road. I think Candy or Catherine mentioned impact on curricula and swapping out of texts. I'd love to hear more detail on that at some point. In terms of what was in, what's out, what texts, what have the curriculum changed? I think that'd be very interesting for certainly me, a non, a person who doesn't make curricula and might not understand how change was needed. Natalie, I probably asked this question the last time we spoke, which just speaks to my uh learning difficulty and or stubbornness. But it it struck me again. One of the slides mentioned um equitable outcomes for everyone. And that always strikes me as, you know, whether it's all men created equal or life, liberty, the pursuit of happiness. They both sort of obviously avoid saying, well, everybody has to end up the same. And it's demonstrably true that people, I just, I find it, is that a promise too high? That we have, everybody should have what they need, everybody, you know, there's all types of minimal things, but everybody's gonna have the same outcomes, equitable outcomes. I always, I always find that a little challenging because there's so many variables in life. It's sort of hard to make all the math work so that people have have uh equal outcomes.
So definitively, no, it's not too high. Our children haven't, they're entitled to an education that not only serves them in ways that we typically think of in terms of. Finding employment, going to college, all of those, you know, traditional societal measures. But children should leave experiencing joy, right? Feeling brilliant, feeling as if they could be their full selves um in in school. And I think there's a bit of a conflation with equity and equality in the question. Equitable outcomes are different than equal outcomes. So there are children graduating Katona Lewisboro and school districts around the country every day who leave feeling prepared for college, prepared for the workforce. And also feeling their full and whole selves were accepted and feeling joyful and feeling brilliant. And then there are children who leave our schools without those feelings. And that's how it's different in terms of an equitable perspective. So I want every child to leave with that joy, with that brilliance, feeling that they were centered, that they learned the history of their ancestors. And that that was meaningful, that they saw themselves reflected not just in the educators who are serving them, but in the content of the curriculum. And so for me, that's the distinction between equitable and equal outcomes. And it is a hundred percent the goal we have to have if we're going to give kids the education to which they're entitled and serve them in all the ways that I think those of us who are educators, you know, signed up for.
Sure, let's frame that way. I fully agree. Thank you.
If you don't mind just staying on this um note for a moment. I can't help but want to ask, and maybe this is a question for Caitlin or for Shivani or for our All In representatives. Perhaps um are in the best position to speak to this, but. It's so hard to think about wanting our students to experience joy and graduate feeling their whole selves and pride and accomplishment and and joy. I mean, I really love your use of that word, Natalie, but in this pandemic moment where, you know, especially at the secondary level, I know we're seeing. A real decline in the number of students who are coming to school in person, even on the days that their cohort can be in school in person. Even at the Q and A last night for curriculum overview, it was so enlightening to attend and to see all of the cameras turned off. Now, these were parents, not um, not students, but you know. How how does this work unfold right now in this time in our buildings? And and how how can you feel, do you feel that you are able to reach students? I mean, it's inspirational and and very hopeful so much of what you're speaking about. But can you comment a little bit on the intersection of all that we're talking about? And what's happening day in and day out in our buildings, in our schools? You know, to the extent that there are some learnings that would be important here.
Well, I I'll try to answer that. And of course, uh, anyone else can jump in as well. I think that when we think of the pandemic and we think of what teachers, students are going through, there's this, you know, enormous sense of isolation. And one of the things that we we have to remember as educators is that the work that we do with uh equity and inclusion is not separate. It's in addition to. Uh, so when we talk about creating brave spaces, those spaces are, you know, we used to say create safe spaces. But the idea is that everything stems out of relationship. And so if we are in classrooms where kids feel disconnected, whether it's because of what's going on with COVID. Or because they don't see themselves reflected in the curriculum. Or because they don't see themselves in the larger population of our school, that becomes part of the same problem. So when we think about inclusion and we think about equity, then we think about race, those are all part of the same story. So all of that work needs to be done together. So I I think that one of the things that happens is that we often separate it and think that if we're doing, you know, we're trying to make kids comfortable and trying to help them learn math. That somehow race and equity doesn't, you know, apply to that in the same way. But I think some of the same components in terms of teaching and learning apply. So I hope that answers your question. If anybody else thinks they can add to that, please do.
Thank you.
Um, I just have a couple of thoughts and a question, if that's okay. First, I feel like the pandemic creates this sense of, um, you know, the feeling that people have when they were on the fringes of equity before. Everyone is now feeling and experiencing those feelings. So I think that the pandemic actually provides a forum to develop empathy for those feelings that certain people have always felt. And the other thing, just from a parent perspective, you know, even though the pandemic has created this different way of learning. The one silver lining is that I kind of hear and learn more about how my kids learn. So, you know, um, from that perspective, I think it's created more opportunities for parents to engage in their kids' learning too.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you. Julia, were you waiting to say something?
I am. And it's my microphone. Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
So I I think about um our young people and I think there is a very strong sense of the need for racial justice. In younger people, maybe sometimes more so in our um, and I'm making big generalizations here, but more so than in our um older generations. And I wonder if there's conversation in your work or guidance in your work to support young people who may um experience in their own house. Challenges in talking about some of the things that that are very important to talk about in terms of equity and racial justice. And and can we support our students so that they feel comfortable to have those conversations in school? And maybe even have those difficult conversations in their own homes. And I I don't know if we, if our students have expressed that or experienced that, but I I have to think it's possible. but I I have to think it's possible. And I just wonder how we support them through that because that makes it even more challenging, I would imagine, when um, you know, when it's not even an environment in your own home that feels like you're receiving the support you need to really explore these types of issues.
I think, oh, go ahead, Andrew.
First, I think it's a really important question and one that schools deal with somewhat regularly. You know, the process of schooling as kids, particularly as they get older and into adolescence, is a process of becoming increasingly mature and independent. And so we do, you know, I think our clinical staff would be quick to say that in these kind of very personal, very challenging conversations, they are engaged with students about how to navigate. I would imagine in our, you know, the ERJ group is a group of sixty to seventy people. And and even though I mentioned earlier, the work is always kind of shifting back and forth between the personal and the systemic. I think the personal tends to be individually reflective. I don't know that it can, it gets into those kinds of conversations that you're referencing, but I think schools are engaged in those conversations regularly with students through through clinicians and counselors and other places uh to support those. You're right, can be very challenging conversations at home, but that is a part of the work that we do in schools and an important work for students in this in this area and in other areas too.
I was just gonna offer that, um, you know, the brave conversations that Candy was speaking about before are a constant negotiation of risks, right? So the depth of my relationship with you is gonna impact how challenging that conversation is for me or how easy I am to sort of stand my ground and hold on to my values and share those with you. That's why it's easier for us to call out a stranger when we see something happening, right? Because we don't have a relationship with that person. It's very simple. It's easy. But the conversations at home for me with my abuela um about her own internalized racism and her privileging white skin uh were hard and were some of the the hardest and most challenging work that I have done. And I do this work every day for a living. So the reality is where that depth of relationship exists, whether it's your own family, whether it's me and my supervisor, right? Me and a colleague who I've worked with for twenty five years to call out bias, to name racism, to name white supremacy, um, that's hard, right? And I'll constantly, each of us as individuals will be negotiating those risks that are associated every time we decide to intervene or not, we decide to speak up or not. And I I think this is what I heard on that last slide of of All In's presentation, the call out to you all as board members, right? The invitation that's offered to be vocal, particularly in a community where everyone's coming in at wildly different uh points of view, that will be your negotiation of risks too. What I know from a research perspective is that the stronger our infrastructure is, right? The stronger that architecture is, the more of us who stand together, the easier your job will be, the easier our job will be in classrooms and the better chance that Caitlin and her peers have of leaving Katona Lewisboro having had an experience where they not only see themselves as agents of change, but they believe change is possible, right, on their watch.
Just wanna add to that, and I I know that this is suggested and throughout the presentation, but I have not ever heard, experienced a conversation about race, equity, inclusion that was or been a part of a conversation that was comfortable, whether it was uh with, you know, someone calling out a friend or uh family or even dealing with it in 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 the classroom. That's one of the things that we try to teach students is how to have civil discourse, how to challenge our understandings of truth so that in ways that are both intellectual, but personally not, you know, nobody feels like, you know, everybody feels bad, but nobody feels like they're not heard. And I think that's an important thing to say. These are never easy conversations, ever, and they don't really get easier. I just thought I would mention that.
Thank you, Candy. I think Caitlin might have been waiting to add to that. Were you trying to say something, Caitlin?
Yeah, I was gonna say, um, I've been fortunate to be able to have an immediate family where I have been able to have those discussions growing up. But definitely, as I've been, I'm in my junior year now, but starting my sophomore year, taking certain courses where those discussions really do happen frequently has not only helped me extend, ex- expand my education also in ERJ, but also having the conversations frequently really empowers, you know, myself, but also I've to, I've talked to other um students, really empowers us to be able to have those conversations more. So whether it is with, you know, extended family or with friends or really in any situation, we feel more comfortable calling things out when we hear it. And I know that um I've personally witnessed conversations like that. So I feel like having that constant education and constant discussion is really beneficial.
That's terrific.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Yeah, Terrence, please.
Hey, thanks. Um, I just wanna say that first, you know, Natalie and I'm really just like fortunate to be able to be on the ERJ and it's been awesome. And I think Natalie and Lou have done a really um spectacular job of kind of leading the group and just creating a a wonderful environment for the work to take place. I I can't, I, you know, genuinely, I can't say enough about the students in particular. They've just been incredible, you know, and I think Caitlin represents that. And what im- impresses me so much is that the same students are there every single time. They show up for that two hour meeting and they're engaged and they're, you know, really just kind of you know, helping to kind of shape and form and lead the 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 dialogue. And it's so um just really kind of blows me away. Um, and again, the teachers, parents, community members and the administration too, right? Like, there are a lot of, I think, districts around the country that um they don't, they don't do this, right? They choose not to or they're afraid of um, you know, kind of reactions to it. And our administration has not done that. They've really kind of just embraced it and they've embraced the challenge and they're there for the discomfort. And I think that's really just wonderful modeling, like everybody is just like doing it at a high level. And I'm just, you know, I I just gotta give kudos and props to everyone for that. So um, I I just have one question for the uh all in folks. And again, thank you for as as educators and staff and alum who are invested, you know, like. So when you look at the curriculum, you know, what's our, what would you say is the biggest kind of like weakness or blind spot right now that, you know, that worries you, right? Like where, where do you think the biggest lift would be right now that you would uh kind of focus on? But again, thank you so much.
What we're focusing on, um, and Catherine, please jump in. I feel like I'm talking a lot. Is we're we're looking at who is not represented. And so that's across units, across grades, so in all our schools. And that is a, uh, you would imagine, a huge job. Um, you know, we've, we've taken some steps. I, we wouldn't say that they're huge steps. They're steps that we're proud of, but we have a lot of work to do. Uh, you know, we wanna make sure that how we're representing history is accurate. And so that when we think about all students, that they are represented in the curriculum. So um, I would say that that was probably the biggest, the biggest steps that we've taken. And whether we work, you know, one unit at a, we're working one unit at a time. You know, we could say, you know, it's hard to measure at this point or how long it's gonna take. We're making mistakes. We're not necessarily doing it all right, but um, we're all in.
Yeah, and I think to add to that, you know, going back to what Natalie and Lou's presentation, when you talked about intersectionality, I think it's also recognizing, you know, our own students and what barriers are we taking down so that they can feel that they can learn the curriculum that, you know, resembles them and shows them in different ways. And once we fill in those gaps of those voices and the people that are missing, you know, how do they have access to it so that they can take what they learn um with the accurate history and the facts brought in and really use it to the best of their advantage?
I just, I I wanna point out, and I guess this is a little, this is a little um braggy for the high school, but this year we have for the first time a facing history course. On the table is a a African American history course. And um, we're, you know, revamping our titles and thinking about, you know, that work consistently. So, you know, I, there, there's so much going on with that. And, you know, we're working our way, doing the same thing in the middle school. We just had a discussion before we came here. We had a short all in meeting before the board meeting to talk about um uh Raisin in the Sun and thinking about the conversation that teachers wanna have with parents about the expectations around studying that text.
Those are great examples. Thank you. Yes, Sawyer, please.
Hi, um, thank you so much for this wonderful presentation. I was wondering um primarily first how, um, and I guess this is more for all in, but how do you plan on teaching American racism to elementary schoolers? Um, just because I know my, I've been taught in this district um since kindergarten and my first real exposure to any education in racism um was in second grade and it was from a paperback book that kind of glorified Abraham Lincoln's role in the emancipation of slaves rather than focusing on the experiences of slaves or the institution itself. Um, and so I was wondering, how do you effectively kind of teach that to an audience that is pretty impression, impressionable and sensitive? Um, while while doing justice to um to.
That's a really great question. That's a great question. Did you have a, did you have another question or do you want me to take that one?
I mean, you can take that one first, I guess. I.
Okay. Well, I really wish that um our elementary school teachers from All In were here because they would answer this a lot better than I will. But I want you to know that this year for ju- just before the election, they they studied voter suppression and I I obviously a big issue and very tied to racism. And so what teachers are trying to do is contextualize it so that it's not just this idea that racism is bad, but this idea of how systemic racism plays out into the lives of how it is that pe- people's lives are affected by racism, whether it's socio-economically, politically and otherwise. So that's one example, but as I said, I would love it if you, our elementary school teachers were here to talk to you because they've done so much with the election and what happened at the Capitol. And this is in elementary school, so there's some powerful work going on. Go ahead, Catherine.
I I would like to also add that I think it, you know, the teachers in All In are really starting with themselves and I think that's key. And so they're doing their own work. And some of the even kindergarten, first grade, young, young kids just having the conversation and, you know, getting rid of the idea of color blindness is is huge. While they may not go into explicit talk about racism and systemic racism, just opening up the doors to have conversations that help normalize race in our country is is a great first start. And Sawyer, I think your question is great and I'm really hoping that as we continue this work, more teachers will see, you know, that this is, this is what they need to do and and how we kind of move forward.
Um, also, I was wondering, um, and this is more for the um equity and racial justice team. Um, how do you plan to um impact or educate people who choose to like assume a position of ignorance when it comes to discussions of race and oppression? Um, I know that we all kind of come in contact with people in our lives who um either turn a blind eye or just don't like to talk about uncomfortable things. But how will the education that you seek to provide to students and community members um bring them in without necessarily catering to ignorance or people who are unwilling to discuss?
So I can't speak for the the committee and how they'll come up with a recommendation specifically for that, but what I can tell you is that your two questions are very much related for me. So um, issues of fairness and justice come up with young people all the time. And I mean, young, young children, right? I'm the mommy of a two year old and she already has real impressions of what fairness and justice are. She's also internalizing a lot about the world at age two. And I jokingly say this, right? But I could do a racial analysis of Bubble Guppies, which for those of you who don't know is a Nickelodeon show that my daughter and many other children are really uh obsessed with. And and part of what I'm saying is that every day that we don't typify conversations about skin color and identity, every day that I don't say to my daughter that black skin is beautiful, she is automatically being, you know, internalizing the opposite of that idea. So when we talk about classroom conversations, it means typifying conversations about skin color so that it's not just a day when it's Thursday, we're gonna talk about race and equity, right? That it's a part of everything that we do here and and that takes time, right? But what the hope would be for a school district is that you make those dialogues unavoidable, which makes being ignorant really hard because you can't use all of those strategies, right? You can still get defensive and we can have, you know, ways to navigate that, but you can't avoid the dialogue, right? Avoidance is probably the number one technique for folks that like really are feeling, you know, the tension come up in their body when something is pushing against beliefs that they've held their whole entire life. So how do you make this essentially the way we do things here? And with talking about racism and systemic inequity, you know, we want it to be the shark. It's not the shark, it's the water, right? So how do we acknowledge that it is in uh all of us? Whether or not we have it at the forefront or on our agenda, how do we make it so that everyone can't avoid acknowledging what is right in front of us? And by that, it's part of what All In is doing with talking about what's happening sociopolitically in this country. When things happen in our own community, we have to talk about them and we have to do it through that racial equity lens. And so the more work that we do to build the infrastructure and add more and more stakeholders who are invested, it's gonna become increasingly uncomfortable for those folks that you're describing and increasingly hard to sustain practices that they've probably held on to for a long time to avoid confronting the inequity that exists in our community, but really in the larger society. So for me, it's, it's how do we make it so incredibly difficult to avoid confronting injustice, speaking up and being really honest about the differences that we come in with and celebrating those differences and not being afraid to talk about them because these are issues that we wanna, you know, remain blind to. So it's it's sort of inviting that as as making this the way we do things here. And I I presume, you know, when the committee comes back to you in a couple of months, they'll have some great strategies specifically around community engagement starts to start to crack open some of those dialogues with folks who haven't had them before and frankly, who probably haven't come to the table before.
Audrey, is it okay if I just say a couple of things, by the way? If if other people don't have questions?
Of course.
Just to, just to maybe bring closure. You know, in listening tonight, I, it's certainly evident to me, and I hope it's evident to the members of the board, how unbelievably fortunate we are to have the people who you've heard from tonight who represent lots of other people and quite a number of whom are in the audience I can see tonight. Uh, but the the insight and the and the wisdom and the commitment and the passion that you hear uh tonight, we we are just so fortunate to have working uh on behalf of the students in our district. And earlier, um, you know, the, I think Terrence may have asked a question or made a comment about the work and the and the pride in the work so far. And and Candy made a comment about the works still to be done. There there is an enormous amount of work to be done. I think it's important to emphasize that, both to celebrate, you know, the the start that's been made here, but also to point out that there will always be an enormous amount ahead of us and it's always going to be complicated work and always personal as well as systemic uh and classroom based as well as organizational based. And so again, you know, we've got between sixty and seventy people in the ERJC. I think, I think Candy and Catherine would help us to know that there's a hundred or more people at times who've worked with the All In group and that's a lot of people. And again, reason to feel proud of the district, I think, at this moment, to have that many people engaged and knowing that there's that kind of commitment to all the work that's ahead. So I really just wanna acknowledge all of those people and say thank you to all of them for the amazing work so far and all the work that I know is to come.
Thank you, Andrew, and please allow us to underscore your gratitude and also to acknowledge that this work takes courage. And we appreciate your willingness to take risks. We appreciate that you, Andrew, have created an environment in which people feel safe taking risks in Katona Lewisboro. And thank you to those of you who are with us at the proverbial table, those of you who are with us in attendance and to the many people who are engaged in this work, whether on a monthly or a daily or a weekly basis. We're all going to be the beneficiaries of it. And thank you again to Caitlin and to Shivani for joining us and to Natalie and Lou and Candy and Catherine. We really appreciate this opportunity to hear from all of you and um the coordination and creativity and effort that went into just putting slides together and all that is entailed in developing a presentation in these times. So thank you very, very much. Um, I don't mean to preclude any further discussion. I'm not sure if anybody else was waiting. Um, I don't mean to preclude any further discussion. I'm not sure if anybody else was waiting. And if not, then thank you. We really appreciate this. Hope you continue to be well. And we look forward to hearing from all of you again in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night. Terrific. Thank you, everybody. That was really nice. I really appreciate the discussion. And I should have probably mentioned sooner that I think we're now at the point in our meeting where if any members of the community or, um, members of the community who are with us are waiting to ask questions or share comments or thoughts, we invite you to please use the Q and A at the bottom of the Zoom. We ask you to please identify yourself and, um, let us know, uh, where your children are enrolled in the district. And so perhaps I should pause here for a moment. Not sure whether anybody was waiting to enter a question. I don't see any yet. Um, and maybe Kim, you can validate whether we have any?
I do not have any comments at this moment.
Okay. All right. Well, then for members of our community who are with us, thank you for being here and for listening. I think that brings us to our consent agenda. Let's see, I'm not aware of any items that need to be pulled out for separate voting. I'll just pause to make sure. And if not, would somebody like to move the consent agenda? Could I have a motion, please? Thank you, Bill, and seconded by Julia. Thank you. Were there any comments, questions? Nope. Okay, then we can go ahead and vote. Fall in favor, please say aye.
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 Seven, zero. And that brings us to board dialogue and discussion, item fourteen point oh one. Did any board members have topics for this evening or further thoughts or comments? Please.
I'm sorry, did I?
No, not at all. Please go ahead, Rory.
Hard to hear you, Rory.
Can't hear you.
Um, I believe that if Mrs. Hadlock and Ms. Schiff, if you mute yourselves, uh, be able to speak clear. Just because you're very close to each other. So I think your computers are all picking up each other.
About if I, uh, does that work better? Okay, thanks. I just noticed the, the appointment of, uh, a new ice hockey coach. Um, and I was wondering, I didn't see the agenda late today, but did we add other coaches? Or do we have the intention to add other coaches for other winter sports?
We added a lot of coaches, um, late in the day, Rory.
I missed it.
So there's a, there's a lengthy list now, anticipate, that we hope will have some opportunity for students if it all moves forward and if it's safe for our students.
Thank you. That's my bad for, uh, not, not.
No, that's okay. We added them late because the timeline was changing constantly.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thanks for clarifying, Rory, and thank you, Alice, for explaining. Any other comments or questions? Okay, then this brings us to.
Can I do one thing? Sorry. We got an email from somebody about the PPE for teachers. I, I was really surprised, I think all the board got it. I was so surprised to get that because I thought that, I mean, I, I remember back in the fall seeing a line item about a lot of money for PPE gear for teachers. Are teachers feeling unsafe and not having the, the proper masks that they need? I, it was, it was a surprising email.
I, I can comment on that. We, we do have the supplies that we need for teachers. We have, we have ample supplies of the, of the, uh, of all the PPE.
Great. I just wasn't sure where it had come from. Did you get, was I the only one that got that email? Or did you guys get the email too about PPE gear? Okay. I just, I, I was surprised because I thought that that was something that we had really, w- we do have that, right? We're not, we're not, okay. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify.
And we do have good relationships with both of our associations. So Andrew and I can reach out and just make sure that if there's something that people need, that they know how to ask for it so that.
Thanks, Alice.
And I would, I would just add, we have a very generous community, uh, and sometimes they make offers, um, not knowing what we have and don't have. And we certainly appreciate that, uh, and the, the concern that they have for our staff is wonderful.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, then I think we can look ahead to future meetings. So a couple of subcommittee meetings coming up. The Policy Committee is going to meet tomorrow morning. And then a week from tomorrow, Sustainability will meet. The Board of Ed is next going to meet at seven thirty on February eleventh. And then again, on February twenty-fifth and February twenty-seventh because we'll be entering into our budget season, so to speak. So on Thursday, February twenty-fifth, we'll have an overview of the superintendent's proposed budget. And then on Saturday, we'll come back and go through a more detailed line-by-line budget analysis. Looks like Finance Committee is meeting February sixteenth at seven PM. Policy again, February nineteenth at nine AM. And the Board has an, uh, executive session scheduled for Tuesday morning, February ninth at eight thirty. Did I miss anything? Does that sound about right? Okay. I think with that, we are ready for a motion to adjourn. Can I ask for a motion, please? Actually, pardon me, um, I'm going to make the motion because I think the Board's going to return back into executive session to discuss, um, employment history of an individual. So I apologize for that. Would somebody please second the motion? Rory, I think I saw that you were at the ready. Thank you. Um, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Perfect, seven, zero. And I think that brings us to adjournment. And thanks again, everybody, for a great meeting and be safe. Wonderful to see you all. We'll see you next time. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.